My name is Stefan Schreinfest from the UN Statistics Division, the UN Secretary of the GGIM, and I have the honor to start you, to lead you into today's session with a few opening thoughts. But it will be brief, and I realize we had a fantastic night last night. So it's always a little bit difficult after a fantastic night. Thank you to our Indian hosts on this occasion to start work again. But here we are. So this session will focus on the IGIF. And I was joking the other day, we have been very successful in branding the IGIF. It has almost, almost become like our, our password, our code word for our brotherhood and sisterhood. I mean, you, you come into a meeting and you, you whisper IGIF. And then you can say, everybody says, oh yeah, come in, you're a part of this group and so. So that's already a first success that we established a brand. So, and it was important. It brought the 10, I would say, the first 10 years of UN GGIM's work together in one framework. And it moves us now towards implementation. It explains to us how all the elements that we have been discussing so much are belonging together. But now the challenge really is to bring this to the ground. The, the implementation is going to be our, the work that we have cut out for ourselves. And I think we have also created a high level group. And many of the members of the high level group are here today, leading us in this discussion. And the IGIF is at the same time, a diagnostic tool and a rallying cry, I would say. I mean, we, it can help the countries to formulate their country action plans. That is of course what should be happening. But even with the country action plans, this is not the end of the story. We really want to produce the data and then we want to use the data. And I like it very much that this session is focused on the use. Because we really, when we talk to these policymakers and we just had that experience with the Economic and Social Council, where we tried to make the argument that we need more resources to do the secretariat work for the UN GGIM. The, the question that the, the other side, the people who are giving us the funding, who are the policy decision makers, asking immediately is, what are you good for? What, what, if I gave you the money, what would you give me that would help me? So I mean, we are really challenged to make our business case and not appear as beggars at the door. But we can have to, after an argument of return on investment. And you give us the money, that's an investment and you will be in a better position. So this is when we have to start arguing in terms of, how does the geospatial information and the geospatial information framework support policy development and decision making? And when we can make those cases, then we will get the attention of the policymakers and those that hold the budget strings, which is very important for us. So I think this is what we are going to discuss today. And I'm very grateful for this framing. And I'm looking forward to a lot of wise words from a lot of wise people that are sitting at this table together in the front here. And Tim Traynor will lead us through the session. And I asked him to come up here and in the process, thank him for everything that he has done. Not only for this session, he has put so much effort in putting the scientific program together for this event, that I really want to profoundly thank him for that.
So, good morning, everyone. I'm going to just talk a little bit about how this will work. But as Stefan said, I'm Tim Traynor. I'm the Chair of the International Advisory Committee for the Program for the Congress. And the Advisory Committee has worked diligently over many, many months to put this Congress together. This is one of what will be four special sessions in the course of the remaining days. There's another one happening at the same time, and there'll be two tomorrow. We identified these special sessions to limit the choices so that we'd have more people engaged in, in the conversations. And this is your session. So we're going to make some statements. We're going to try to be probing in our, in our, in our comments to talk about the IGIF and talk about policy and decision making. But what we really want to do is we want to hear from you in terms of what your interests are, the questions you might have. Because this is an evolutionary process. We're, we're on a journey. We started when the UN GGIM was founded in 2011. We worked on topics that were important to the geospatial community. And that evolved into the framework, the IGIF. And that now is the core part of GGIM's work. It's still a growing process. We're still learning as we go. We're testing as we go. And there's a lot more to be done. We're not, we're, we're, we're nowhere near finished. We have a long way to go, but we're making very good progress. And so this is part of that evolution. We want to hear from you, we want to get your ideas. So as we put the framework together, and you know that in the framework we have three parts. We have basically the, the why, why is geospatial important? That's really intended to be to the decision makers, to make the case about why geospatial is important and to get their support. On its own, it's not enough. We have to do more to engage with them. And that's part of the conversation we'll have today. The second part was the implementation guide, and this is really the what? What is GGIM and IGIF all about? You know, what are the components? What are the different aspects of it? And it was tied to those nine strategic pathways that you've been, I'm sure, very familiar with as we do, make our progress on this project. The third part was the country level action plan. And this is now going into the countries themselves, country owned, country led. It's their engagement to develop their own plans. And we haven't even reached the point of what Stefan was just talking about in terms of implementation. You can't implement unless you have a plan. So that's where the country level action plans come in. As we went down this path, it became really clear that we needed oversight. We needed guidance, we needed help. And in that sense, then we formed something called the High Level Group for the IGIF. And at this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Tulu and Deirdre Bishop to come on up to the stage because they serve on this multi-member state group as the co-chairs of the High Level Group for the IGIF. They had their first in-person meeting this past spring. They've been meeting regularly, virtually during the pandemic time. But it's a relatively new group. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my dear friends and colleagues, Dr. Tulu. Deirdre.
Thank you, Tim, and good morning, everyone. How's the microphone, okay? All right, wonderful. Well, on behalf of Dr. Tulu and I, we're happy to be here with you. It's an honor to be together in person and to share a few thoughts about how the work of the High Level Group of the IGIF is progressing. We, I've been here for a few days now, and as Stefan says, something very popular amongst this group is the IGIF. Tim talked about the three components, the overarching strategic framework, the implementation guide, and the country level action plans. And I heard about all of those yesterday through the welcoming remarks, through the plenary, and then through the sessions in the afternoon. We heard from countries like Tonga, from Georgia, from the Ukraine, about how they're working to implement the IGIF. But unless you're doing that work, or unless you're part of the club that Stefan mentioned, it's hard to understand exactly what that work entails and why it's so important to the future of our world. The High Level Group was designed to solve that problem. Dr. Tulu and I are honored to co-chair that group. And we lead a group of 22 member countries. The group is working to provide strategic direction, to promote the IGIF around the world, to coordinate the activities of the IGIF, and to provide oversight as that work moves on. We began our work in February of 2021 virtually. We weren't yet ready to come together because of the COVID pandemic. But we made a lot of progress and we completed a strategic plan. What is the work of the High Level Group? We were very fortunate that in April of 2022, we were able to have our first in-person meeting at the United Nations in New York. And that's when things really got cooking. We came together, we formed three working groups. One focused on improving communication. The next focused on strengthening capacity development. And the third focused on mobilizing sustainable funding. Each of these working groups has a cohort of member states, representatives from the member states, working to implement a plan of work associated with each of those goals. I'd like to be honest here, we have a lot of interest, a lot of support for our strengthening capacity development working group. We also have a lot of expertise and interest as related to improving communications and mobilizing sustainable funding. However, we need more support in those areas. And if you have an interest, if you have experience, or if you know someone with experience in those areas, again, communications, so how do we share our message? Or mobilizing sustainable funding, how do we get a little bit more monetary support? We would appreciate that. As we were leading the work, the plan of work within the High Level Group, more and more countries were starting to implement their country level action plans. And right now, 40 countries have started this very important work to build the framework of the IGIF. So let's talk a little bit about why this is so important. The IGIF sits at the center of all of the work related to the United Nations Committee of Experts on Global Geospatial Information Management. It is the umbrella. It's going to effectively mobilize to geo enable our member states so that they in turn can better measure, monitor, and achieve sustainable social, economic, and environmental development, leaving no one behind. The IGIF is a crucial overarching framework for achieving national development priorities and the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. It's important to modernize national geospatial information management arrangements and capacities and for advancing geospatial information within the broader digital ecosystem. The positive impacts of the IGIF are innumerable, with more effective integration of the strategic and statistical and geospatial information management, improving delivery of land administration, healthcare, management of climate change, and planning to reduce disaster risks. Again, I can't stress how important the work of the IGIF is. And to tell you a little bit more about what's happening at the local level, the regional level, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tulu. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Deirdre, for the remark. I will briefly explain to the experience of EDPAN in terms of implementing the IGIF. EDPAN has been among the, some 40, above 40 countries that have started implementing the IGIF. We have developed the IGIF Country Level Action Plan since 2019. And currently, we are in the implementation phase with the SDG Data Alliance. And during the, during the development of a country level action plan, we have been engaging with several stakeholders. And we learned that the IGIF framework is very important to advance sustainable development goals and national priorities. And in that process, we actually understand the importance of the IGIF, leveraging implementation of different framework, effective land governance, and it also advances the integration of geospatial with statistical data and other socio-economic parameters. And the IGIF can actually advance effective decision making and evidence policymaking. The existing challenge that we noticed during the formulation of the Country Level Action Plan was most policies have been developed based on political opinion and interest. And contemporary policy are actually dependent on political interests and multiple interests among political parties and government institutions. And this will actually cause the effectiveness of allocating scarce resources to address real national, social, and economic challenges. And identically guarantee to advance the existing socio-economic architecture of a specific country by locating what is needed in what place and what are the existing challenge. Identically tell, provide evidence on what is, what exists where and at what magnitude, and also what kind of intervention has to be taken to bring inclusive socio-economic development, to guarantee fairness, equality, and participation. So the, the IGIF itself will bring much more into developing a policy based on evidence. And policy that has, is developed based on evidence will lead to equitable socio-economic development. It can actually identify the gaps in national challenges. According to 17 strategic goals, SDG goals, we, we are trying to, the IGIF will leverage and create capability for implementing countries to understand the, the SDG goals and 169 target indicators and the extent of all indicators, the existing extent of implementing the indicators. And the level of, the level of actually public service and government interventions to address socio-economic development can be well understood by implementing the SDG goals. And we are in a process of understanding how we can implement the SDG goals through the SDG Data Alliance. In this process, we have been discussing with national different ministries, especially with the Planning and Development Ministry and key government agencies. We actually, we are able to understand the, how the planning is going on, the spatial planning. The national spatial planning is currently going on, actually with a lack of appropriate evidence. So government is also aspiring, looking for a system or a geospatial information management that can leverage evidence to understand the level of challenge in terms of socio-economic and environmental management. So the IGIF is leveraging that opportunity. We are now trying to understand the 17 SDG goals customized to our national priorities. And we're trying to understand the implementation level of the targets and indicators at a spatial extent. And we are trying to understand what's going on in specific localities and what the magnitude and scale of implementation, and also the gaps during the implementation. So that this SDG data and the IGIF will leverage integration of spatial data with statistical information, with socio-economic datas. And the, especially the SDG Data Alliance project, which is a part of implementing the IGIF, will help government to understand the, the gaps in the policy implementation. And also will help to guide government to align their policies based on evidences that can be explained in terms of real scientific evidence that can be acquired through analyzing the, the status of the SDG implementation customized to national circumstances. So the IGIF can actually leverage transformative evidence-based policies. These policies can be mainstreamed across different sectors to address health issues, to address environmental challenges and global challenges, to address social and economic problems and solutions. So IGIF is at the heart of the socio-economic development. And it will bring much better improvement towards this, enabling the global community to, to have a better socio-economic status. And the IGIF can, will actually ensure that no one will be left behind because it provides evidence that can actually maintain and secure inclusiveness in terms of, in, in all aspects of socio-economic development. So it's a very important framework. And we look forward to active participation of all members supporting the work of the High Level Group. We would like to get, encourage you to participate in, in our work and contribute to the advancement of the IGIF as it is enabling and at the center of the work of the UN GGIM Committee of Expert. And it also leverages different framework and national and regional policies and agendas. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Dr. Tulu and Deirdre. If I could ask you just to join on the panel. And what I, what I'd like to do is ask the rest of our panel if you would please come up. And while they're coming up, I'll just describe what we're going to do as part of this panel. So we've brought in folks with a specific area of expertise or experience. And we, we're going to just hear some brief statements from them in terms of their focus on policy and decision making or issues that they think are important, that we should focus in on. I'm going to do a very brief introduction in terms of how I see their role on the panel. They may actually have a very different view, and that's fine. And then, once they finish making their statements, then we're going to turn it back to you. And we're going to ask you to participate and ask your questions so that we can advance this topic. So, and I'm going, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to briefly, again, from my point of view, we've heard from Deirdre and we've heard from Dr. Tulu about their role on the High Level Group of the IGIF. But now I'm going to turn it around and I'm going to say, from a perspective of a member of the panel, both Dr. Tulu and Deirdre manage large geospatial operations in big countries with large populations. So the responsibilities that they have are quite extensive. The experience that they have are really extensive. So that's a perspective, they're going to come at this from a policy and decision making point of view that, that will be in a certain, certain realm. As we go down the list, we have Talia Baldwin from the UK Geospatial Commission. Talia is the director. This, this geospatial commission in the United Kingdom is new. It's a new concept. It's something that, in my experience, I don't, I'm not aware of another country that has anything quite like this. And so I think from the point of view of all of us in our countries, it may be something that we want to learn more about. We want to possibly even emulate. I can tell you that in my role in the United States, we're looking at this idea just to learn more about it, to see what it's about and whether it could actually help serve the national interest. So it's going to be important to hear Talia's engagement on this topic of how this supports the policy and decision making. So thank you, Talia. Next, we have Sydney. So Sydney is from Eswatini. Sydney just recently, in the last few months, right, Sydney? He was taken out of the geospatial realm. This always happens to us. We have really good people and they take them away from us. And he is now the permanent secretary to the, to the Minister of Agriculture in Eswatini. This is a very important position. But now he has a different lens in looking at the value and importance of geospatial information with regard to, for example, a very applied area in agriculture. So this is, this is interesting, I think, as we go forward. And I'm going to come back to them and ask them to make their statements, but I want to frame their role on this panel. Next, we have Lee Schwartz. Lee Schwartz is from the US State Department, or Department of State. And he is, he is the geographer of the United States of America. He's responsible for all the official things that happen within the US State Department. So you can appreciate from a policy perspective, this is more of an official view or official role. And that's an important thing for us to be cognizant of. And then he has a, a perspective that, in which he, he knows from a distance a lot of what's happening around the world. That's part of his job is to, to, to monitor that and to understand. So it'll be interesting to hear some of Lee's points. And then we have Rian. So Rian is with us, and she's a communications expert. And generally speaking, I maintain that geospatial folks are not really the best at communication sometimes. We have a tendency to talk about the details of our day-to-day work, which is really good. But when you're trying to talk to someone in a policy level or someone in a decision-making level, they don't understand the nuances of what we do day-to-day. So the importance of having communication and effective communication in, in advancing policy and decision-making, I think, is absolutely critical. So now I'm going to, I, we, I've given Deirdre and Dr. Tulu an opportunity to talk about the High Level Group. They're going to be engaged in the panel, but I'm going to move past them. And I'm going to now go to Talia if you want to just make a couple of statements. And we have, we have, you have, okay, there we go. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you this morning. It's really interesting opportunity to be able to talk in amongst a community of experts about developing geospatial policy. So Tim mentioned that I'm director of a team in the middle of the UK government that's been set up relatively recently to have a look at all the good work that's been going on in the UK and internationally, and to set a strategic policy framework for how we take some of the work forward and how we think about any new location data opportunities and translate those opportunities into actionable outcomes. So it's really interesting to hear different perspectives on how best to do this. The IGIF for the UK has formed the basis of the strategy that we developed a couple of years ago and published. From our perspective, it really replicates the way that we think about developing policy in general. So I think it's important in terms of establishing a common language that can leverage support from decision makers in countries, people who hold the purse strings, politicians who decide what the agenda for policy is in each country. And I'm quite interested in understanding a little bit more about how the country level action plans translate into something that can be common across an international agenda. So hopefully, the conversation this morning can pick that up.
Thank you. We're on to you, Sydney. Do you have some introductory comments you'd like to make? And you know, Sydney, if I could, Sydney is involved, and Eswatini is involved in the Country Level Action Plan. So they're developing in their country a comprehensive approach to this. So I don't know if you want to say something about that relative to the issue of policy and decision making. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sydney. I'm from the Kingdom of Eswatini in Southern Africa. Sometimes you get to a situation whereby your proximity to other countries forces you to develop sensible activities and ways of improving livelihoods of people in your country. As a small country in Southern Africa, our neighboring countries are Mozambique and South Africa. But South Africa, of course, is a well-developed country and most of our resources come from South Africa. So in a way, we are pushed to develop at the same time as the neighboring countries develop. In the Kingdom of Eswatini, the development of integrated geospatial framework of integrated geospatial framework is not necessarily a new concept. But what I have observed is that when we were talking to the politicians, the stakeholders, and engaging them on the development of the IGIF, we realized that what needed to be done was just to get them organized. At some point in time, we realized that some of the geospatial information users were not even aware that they are geospatial information users. So the development of an IGIF will sort of help us get organized. And we really wanted to set up a sensible legal framework, institutional framework, and ensure availability, exchange, and proper standards of our data. So we decided to talk to the politicians and introduce the idea. Government policies are very much clear on the use of geospatial information. But what we realized was that sometimes the terminology that we use as specialists maybe in our field does not necessarily give the politicians a very clear idea as to what you are talking about. I mean, for some of us, we had to even explain that geospatial information has been used in the country all these years, but it's just a question of getting ourselves organized now and putting things in order. The most interesting part of the establishment of the IGIF in the country was the interest amongst the stakeholders. We realized that most of the stakeholders were saying to us, this is long overdue, should have been done a long time ago. And we realized that we were working in silos. Everybody was trying something in their corner there. So really, the establishment of the IGIF put us in a very interesting position because we were now going to consolidate all our activities and really put them together. So basically, we are working now. We've got to a point where we are developing our country-level action plan. Out of the 16 tasks that we are supposed to do, we are now at task number nine and 10. So we think we are moving in the right direction. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sydney. That was very good. And yeah, things have really progressed in the IGIF for Eswatini. All right, now we're on to Lee. And so Lee will have an international perspective, which is important, I think, for this panel in listening to some of the comments that Lee has from his point of view. Lee, please.
Thank you, Tim. And so Tim asked me to talk a little bit about evidence-based decision-making. And I'm fortunate that I sit in the Department of State and we're co-located with our policymakers. And the Office of the Geographer has a task to do objective analysis to support our policymakers in their decision-making. So it fits squarely in the theme of this session. And we do it in two different ways. We make maps and we do analysis. We do analysis on transboundary issues that we consider to be issues that don't necessarily fit neatly into one particular region, issues such as food security and water security and climate change and refugees and those types of issues that are sometimes inherently aspatial. And of course, the most powerful medium we have is to use our maps and to use maps effectively to support decision-making. And maps are all about data. I sometimes say that in the areas we work in, there are three ways to look at data. There are good, there are bad data, old data, and no data. Because it's easy to work and to make a map when you have, you know, full geo-enabled data sets that are up to date. But it's more of a challenge when you have to figure out ways to fill holes in a map with good data. And that's, I think, one of the challenges we have from the perspective of my discipline, geography, to make sure we can translate data into decision-making and translate our science, the science of geography, into policy. Some of the issues that we work in over the years, geospatial standards have been extremely important. Disaster assistance, working with donors to try to make sure that equitable distribution of projects are undertaken in countries and regions where they've been devastated either by complex emergencies or natural disasters. We document atrocities and war crimes. And we have to do it in a way that's consistent, not only with our policies, but with international legal norms and ways where the documentation of crimes can be translated into evidence that can be used effectively at war crimes tribunals. And even such issues as combating wildlife trafficking and transnational organized crime. We've recently published an article on geospatial standards for combating wildlife trafficking because if you don't have similar geospatial standards for events that are taking place in one country, you can't track the provenance of that crime as it goes from a country through a border to a port to a final destination. So all of these involve geospatial data standards that are important for the work we do. A couple of other comments I want to make. Partnerships are critical. We can't do it alone. We depend on partnerships, particularly for local content. And my office engages in a number of partnerships around the world. I'll be speaking about some of them later on this afternoon. Little advertisement for a session I'm in. And also, I'm the co-chair with Dr. W. Fugate, who is here somewhere, from the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, of a worldwide human geography data working group that tries to make sure we can extend the reach of collecting on human geography data, which are sometimes very difficult to map, but are important to have a local understanding of what's going on. And finally, and a little segue to you, Rian, I think communication is very important. I think geographers need to be able to speak effectively, not only with one another, but with other scientists. I think this was brought up at yesterday's plenary session. I know we've had climate scientists and geographers in the same room and the climate scientists couldn't talk to the geographers without talking about models and the geographers couldn't talk to the climate scientists without using maps. And then how to translate that into policymakers and decision-makers gets even more important. And final last point, no matter all of the tools and technologies we have for remotely sensing information, I can't emphasize enough the importance of ground truth to test against a lot of the remotely sensed information we have in terms of getting at the truth on the ground and the local content. So thank you.
Thank you, Lee. And so you can see, we have quite a variety of perspectives and roles to play in the geospatial domain. And before I go to Rian, I'm going to tee it up for you, Rian. So we have established really important organizations that are maintaining and growing geospatial responsibilities. We have a new concept in the Geospatial Commission to address the management and the engagement and the policy and the decision-making for geospatial activities in the United Kingdom. Sydney comes in and he's embarking on the core of the IGIF with the country-level action plans. And he's on now the other side being the user of that information. So from that perspective, that's also important. And then, of course, we have Lee's comments about complex situations in a complex world. So obviously, that adds a whole different dimension. So tell us, from a communications perspective, how do we do this?
Thank you, Tim, for asking me the million-dollar question at the end. I'm Rian French. I am a former journalist who found her way to the geospatial world through a love of maps and what the maps can do for people and planet. My job essentially is to help people reach the right audiences with the right words, the right messaging, and in the right ways. I was very lucky. I've been working on a project with the Secretariat of UN GGIM alongside six IGIF country project teams, including Dr. Tulu and his team in Ethiopia, to help them with the Strategic Pathway 9 part of their implementation plans. So we've gathered quite a lot of groundwork. We've looked at all the different aspects of communications. We've looked at strategy, plans, methods. And we've put together some ideas on how best to use that and adapt them, most importantly, to the national circumstances because communications isn't really about one size fitting all. You need to be able to talk to the audience that you're wanting to influence. And that work is currently being looked at by the Secretariat and we're hoping that it will be made available very soon and look forward to sharing it with you. I think the one thing I would like to say, sort of just in closing, well, there's two things, actually. One is picking up Lee's point about being trusted and, you know, being reliable. That's an important principle in Strategic Pathway 9. And I think it's one of the most important, given the world that we live in today and the types of communications we have. Anybody now can go onto social media and make a statement. And I think if we want people to trust the messages that we're giving to them and then trust our data, we do have to be open and honest and transparent. I think that's really important. The other thing is a comment that struck me when I was chatting with Deirdre this morning. And she was saying, unless you're actually implementing and doing the IGIF, it's actually quite hard to understand what it is. And I think that's absolutely true. And therefore, if you haven't really got a good description of what it is, it's really hard to communicate. I think this conference is the first time, and it was in a speech that Stefan gave yesterday, that I've really heard the IGF described in a way that I think is accessible to a wider audience. So I'm looking forward to getting the full text of Stefan's speech and really doing some analysis and seeing how else we can improve upon that because we can always improve with our communications in this sector.
Thank you, Rian. And you know, I just want to tie Rian's comments back to Sydney's situation where he talked about engaging with stakeholders. And in this case, he's really specifying that these are new stakeholders. These are areas of government or user communities that they may not have had that kind of engagement with in the past. So communication is clearly a critical component of that because oftentimes, the groups that you're speaking to or the individuals you're speaking to, they're not familiar with what this is all about. So being clear and being simple in those communications is really critical. Okay, so at this stage, we're going to turn it over to you. We have a lot of time and we have sufficient time. And so we want to hear from you. We want to hear your questions. And I have a couple of ground rules. One, we want questions, so let's keep questions. And then let's try to keep the brief with those questions so we have more opportunity to hear more of you and more of your interests. And if you have a specific panelist that you're directing the question to, that's fine. Or if you have a general question that you want to open up to the panel, we'll take it from there and I'll try to help moderate that. So we have several microphones stationed around the room. You need to be at a microphone in order to ask your question. So please, let's have some questions. Anybody want to start? Go ahead, please. And so you have to come to one of the microphones that's in the aisleways. There's at least eight or 10 of them around. Thank you.
I am Shushankar from National Remote Sensing Center, ISR-O.
Okay.
And I understand there is a mention about geospatial standards. Now, is there any common geospatial standards across the countries so that the data is interoperable?
Thank you for the question. And I'm just going to open that up to anyone on the panel who may want to take that. Anybody want to take that? I can answer it, but I'd rather not if I can help. Do you want to take it? Good. Deirdre, please. Sorry.
Thank you for your question. I'll repeat the question to make sure that I'm clear and so that the audience understands. The question relates to the use of standards and is there a way to provide consistency across the countries in regard to standards? Do I have that right?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah, okay, great. I was sitting here listening to our panelists and Tim mentioned that we have a variety of perspectives. But something that I think we all have in common is the ability to use the IGIF as a consistent tool. And within the IGIF, one of the pathways relates to standards and provides guidelines for how best to do that. I think it would be important for us to all take a look at that chapter within the IGIF to see if we're complying with the recommendation within the IGIF. If we're not, why not? If we're not, can we change a little bit to help bring consistency across our international borders?
Thank you. Anyone else want to offer a comment on that topic? You okay? So Sydney, did you have, wanted something you want to say? Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. I think when we look at standards, we can look at them maybe at two levels. One level would be probably the internationally recognized standards. In this case, which would be probably the use of the ISO TC211. And then we look at local standards. For instance, in our case, we want to make sure that the data that we collect may come from any source in the country, but there will be interoperability between the data sets. So at a local standard, we create our own standards and these standards are based on the ISO TC211 and they are basically customized for the needs of our country. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sydney. And one of the things I would just say is that in the standards domain, I think for geospatial information, we are generally in a very good place. The standards bodies keep up with the evolution of geospatial information and the geospatial tools we have. Compared with some other domains, I think geospatial is in a pretty good place in that regard. So please, your question. I think you could just start talking. I think they're managing it from that side. Is that right?
Hi, good morning. I'm Pradya Kulkarani. I'm from the DST. My question is about implementation aspects of IGIF. Maybe to Mr. Sydney or anybody in the panel. Now, since establishing a national-level IGIF or a GF would be entailing a lot of activities which are sequential and some of them perhaps simultaneous as well. In your vast experiences, can you list out what are the sequence of activities which are involved in making a national-level IGIF so that we are not wasting upon time or we are not duplicating efforts? Or it will be the best-fitting and best-suiting sequence of procedures? Can you educate on that?
So I'm going to partially answer your question. It's a very good question. The details of an answer to the question actually are going to be in another session that we're going to have tomorrow, similar to this kind of a session, where we will talk about country-level action plans and how that process works. So we'll go into more detail at that time. But maybe just from a policy decision-making perspective, does anyone want to, please, Dr. Tulu?
Thank you very much for the question. The development of a country-level action plan, actually, there is a guide for implementing the developing country-level action plan, which is IGF Implementation Guide. This is adopted by the UN GGIM Committee of Experts. And the resource material is available at the UN GGIM site. And with respect to the prioritization of the nine strategic pathways, I think it depends on the national circumstance. Every country has its own national priorities. So the nine strategic pathways can be prioritized based on national interest in consultation with key stakeholders. And each country can develop their own national priorities and can advance the implementation of the IGF in a phased approach. So it depends on the country's actual circumstance and interest.
Go ahead, Sydney, please, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the question. Looking at it at face value, it's a huge task. It's a mammoth task. You are thinking, how do I start? But I want to say that help is definitely available. UN GGIM has set up quite a number of programs and sources of assistance that one can get. And once you start working, you realize that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are already set up maybe guidelines that will assist you as a country. So at the end of the day, you need to know who has been through that path and then you get assistance from them. Thank you.
Tali, I didn't know if you wanted to say something about, from a policy perspective, getting into this business of building the I G I F. Do you have comments you would like to make about that?
Sure. Sydney, I, that's really interesting to hear. I suppose the UK strategy, which is relatively recently published, is an example of what could be considered a country-level action plan without going through the specific stages. We've skipped the specific application of the components of the I G F because, to a large extent, I suppose they're already within the organizational structure and priorities of the different geospatial agencies in the UK. So I can understand how the breadth and the different categories of activity in the I G F can be fairly daunting to approach from that perspective. From the perspective of policy development in general, the categories we recognize, so when you're building a business case to improve geospatial data that is linked to, for example, underground assets, which is one of the programs that we kicked off quite early on, you're thinking about how you build an economic case to secure financial investment into the services that you want to build and develop before you can run them. You're thinking about how the data needs to operate, whether the owners of the data retain the ownership or whether you're building something else and have to think about I P rights. You're thinking about standards that you apply where in industry, the standards might not be common at the moment, but we want to have a common standard at a kind of base level for, that inform how you translate that data into something that is useful for a uniform and central service. We're thinking about engagement, how we communicate the value, the opportunity to industry of getting involved in this kind of initiative. We're thinking about the governance, the future operating model of the asset, how it's run, who runs it, how we can operate it on a sustainable basis. So I suppose what I'm saying is, from a UK perspective, we tend to think about the components of the I G F as relevant for specific initiatives that we're developing. And for us, in that kind of context, they feel more real, more implementable, more relevant, and not that different actually from how you deploy common sense when you're developing a policy that you want to translate from development into implementation. So there's a lot of common ground there, I think. And obviously, I mentioned at the beginning that we think about the I G F as useful to establish a common language. We haven't discussed it very much here, but it's come up quite a lot in other panels, that geospatial data and the geospatial agenda is something that we're highlighting in the context of how useful it is for lots of different things that are priorities for countries. So we want to elevate the conversation about geospatial data and technologies that have been happening over here and try and ensure that people who make decisions about how best to do things understand that geospatial data is a fundamental component of lots of different initiatives that are going on, whether the objectives are to bring about sustainable development, climate action, economic growth, infrastructure management and delivery, transport infrastructure. So the components of the I G F and of policymaking in general, I think, are very informative because they also link with how we generally think about how to implement policies more broadly. And I think it's really key to just underline that, so we're not setting up a structure that looks like it's different from anything else that governments are doing that requires location data.
Thank you. Rhianna, did you want to add a point? Because I could see you were hearing this.
Yeah, I would, actually. So I just wanted to share that when we were doing our project, in terms of the sequence of activities, all of the project teams recognized that communicating with their people was really important right from the very start in order to implement the I G I F. So I think sometimes we forget that we also need to talk to and explain things to the people that we're working alongside in our organizations. So I think communications also has a part to play. And that internal communications is quite an important part right at the very beginning as you begin your journey.
Thank you. And I guess one of the other things I would say is that you're hearing in the comments that are made, that the U N I G I F is applying to both mature systems, mature situations for some countries, and right to the other extreme where you have countries that are starting really from the beginning and building. So it is applicable, it's useful, and it applies in all of those different contexts. So more on that tomorrow. Ah, very good. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah. The title of this session inspires me to talk about going beyond the governments and the corporates. We're talking about the last man or the community. I do not know how to explain a kind of struggle that I'm trying to wage. I work in I H T Bombay. But for last 10 years, I've been trying to get simple boundaries of the villages on my desktop. I've not been able to go beyond a particular state. There are many people here in the state governments who have, who are sitting with all the data, but they won't easily share because of whatever restrictions they have. How do we expect the community in general, students who may be aspiring to do something for their own community, work in an environment where institutions, either corporates or the governments, are sitting tight on data? What does United Nations offer as a, or this particular, let's say, organization can offer, as an organizational structure which can enable the students in the colleges to generate their own data, systematize it, and aggregate it so that it is not imprisoned by this kind of a limitation that we are at the moment experiencing? I hope it's not very controversial, but that's a real problem. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your question. And I think your question applies to many people in the room at different times. It's how do we unlock the data that we need? I'm going to turn to Lee on this one to start with because you're a boundary person. He's discussing the need to have boundaries at an appropriate level of geography to be able to use. What would be your response to this in that context?
Well, if I can speak completely off the record, I'll tell you my view on this. I think that it's increasingly a challenge for governments to control information like boundaries when there's so much information that's available in open source, in crowdsourced information. And I think industries and private companies are going to increasingly drive the importance of opening up data because you're going to have so many different competing boundaries, for instance, local level, state level, federal level, that, you know, the existence of official boundaries, which is what the UN is tasked with doing, I think is going to be harder and harder, not easier and easier, despite the institutions that are being set up. So I think much like with geospatial standards, a lot of the data that will be shared will be coming from private sectors that will be driving the governments to perhaps be more amenable to releasing data that they previously were restricting because of concerns over privacy and other issues. So I think it's a tricky issue. It's a great question. There's no easy answer. The United Nations does not have an answer for that, I don't think. But I think the answer lies in the future with data increasingly being available freely and openly and on web-based applications for anybody to map them.
Thanks. That's great. Deirdre, do you want to take a stab at this one? Okay.
Thanks. I heard you talk a lot about students in your question and how do we bring them to the table. I was thinking about how we produce geographic data in the United States. Traditionally, it's been conducted by federal organizations and we serve as the authoritative source. And we implement the governance and make the decisions related to that data. Very recently, there was a suggestion that as part of our governance model, we include both the private sector and academia. And to be honest with you, my initial reaction was, no way. We can't go there. Our job is hard enough. But as I've thought about it more and as I've interacted more within the international community and with the private sector, I'm thinking it's not such a bad idea that perhaps as we set up our governance models within our countries, we need to consider the role of the private sector, the role of the academic institutions in the production and delivery of geographic information. So that might just be something to consider to help in regard to bringing the academics, the students to the table.
Yeah, you know, as we were talking about the uses of the data and the importance of using lots of different kinds of data, oftentimes, that data doesn't make sense unless you have a geographic area to which that data apply. And oftentimes, using those examples of what's possible to leadership from a policy perspective and so forth, that helps to make the case of trying to get better organized on these kinds of challenges that we face. But this is not an uncommon challenge for many countries in the work that we've been doing. Anyone else want to take a comment here or should we go on to another question? You okay? All right, let's, yes, please.
Good morning, dear colleagues. The national geospatial initiatives have a different level of progress in the world. So I wanted to ask you about what is the best methodology or strategy to identify the starting point in the I G I F implementation? Thank you.
Anyone want to try that one? What's the best starting point for beginning in the U N I G I F process? Anyone want to try to take a stab at that? Dr. Tulu, you want to?
Thank you very much for the question. The implementation of, the best strategy for implementing the I G F depends on the national geospatial information management capabilities. So in most developing nations where the national geospatial information management is very matured, I think they can use the I G F to leverage, to develop different kind of policies and to align the I G F framework with national policy development and to improve some gaps and challenges across the whole, across the nine strategic pathways and to advance maybe innovation. The future geospatial ecosystem is to integrate, I think, data integration and integration of systems and to advance the geospatial services across different sectors. So it depends on the national capability. In developing countries where geospatial information management is very weak across the nine strategic pathways, there is, in some cases, there is no data sharing policy and there is no legal framework. There is a challenge in data governance and also implementation of standards. So depending on the national circumstance, I think the strategy can be designed to advance the implementation of the I G F to strengthen national geospatial information management that can respond to national needs, supporting the government to address the national development agendas by leveraging integration of geospatial with statistical and social and environmental parameters.
Thank you. And what I would add to that is that in our experience so far, and we're gaining experience with time, one aspect is that in going through the process of the U N I G I F Country Level Action Plan, that process is what we would consider to be very prescriptive. Step one, step two, step three, step four. Then you look at the nine strategic pathways of the U N I G I F. And it's much broader than what we have experienced in, say, traditional national spatial data infrastructures. It's much more than that. And so now the challenge is, how much can you do? What's that starting point? What can you do? And that's part of this process that we go through in developing that country-level action plan. And we focus on some things that you've heard from the panel. Stakeholders, national priorities, national circumstances, and then what's the inventory of what your current capabilities are, and then getting to the point that Dr. Tulu just made about the gaps. Where you want to be versus where you are, that's how you determine where your gaps are. So you have to go through an orderly process. And at the end of the day, our experience is showing so far that it's too much to do. In other words, you can't do all nine strategic pathways at the same time as you try to build this U N I G I F. You have to make decisions. What's more important than something else? So these are a bit of a challenge as you go. Okay, another question, please. Sorry, right over here. Yes. I like those numbers. I can see.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, Tim. My name is Jose. I come from Honduras. I do have a general question. When we present data to policymaker and decision-maker and we present the data, we present honest data, if we can say that, but data that shows how bad the situation is? And how can we encourage the decision-maker to keep, to believe in the importance of the data? Thank you.
That's a very good question. And hello, Jose. It's good to see you. Anyone want to take a first go at that one? Go ahead, Sydney, please.
Thank you very much for that question. I think this is one of the biggest challenges that we've had to go through. But here's what I can say. Policies are developed in a country for a specific need. Governments' observations that there is a need to address and they come up with policies. Now, those policies are very important to them. So what we need to do as people who are working with geospatial information is to find out or tap into those existing policies and find out where geospatial information can be of help. Naturally speaking, geospatial information is cross-cutting, I mean, in almost all sectors of life. So what we need to do is to identify exactly where geospatial information can be used to improve or to ensure that those policies are achieved in the countries. Politicians are very sensitive, decision-makers are very sensitive about investing resources on things that will not enable them to achieve certain policies that they've come up with. So it is very important for us to have a very good listening ear and find out what existing policies are. And then we go a step further and say, in order for you to be able to achieve this, this is why you will need geospatial information. Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. Lee, do you have a comment you would like to?
Yeah, very interesting question. I think, at least in my role, my job isn't to convince a policymaker of a decision one way or another, but to create a product that supports a decision that they want to take usually, or a policy position. So the question is, do you use the data to support? So the question is, do you use the data to support a policy? Or do you use the data to change a policy? And you can be honest with your data and present it in a way that does either, depending on the purpose of the product you're creating. So I don't necessarily think it's a question of honesty or dishonesty. I think it's a question of taking good data and presenting it in a way that either supports a policy or moves to change a policy. And if you're in a government, you're usually trying to support a policy. And if you're outside the government, you may be wanting to change that policy. But I don't necessarily think it's a question of honesty or dishonesty. It's a question of how the data are used and what purpose you want to use the data.
Thanks, Lee. Anyone else? Talia, do you want to take a stab at that or, yeah?
I agree with that. I think context is key. If you're being asked to provide data to evidence a particular approach, then you should be able to have an open conversation about how good that data is for that particular purpose. So, you know, we often talk about trusted and authoritative data. Really, what we're talking about is data that's fit for purpose for the analysis that we want to produce or the evidence that we want to come up with to support a change in policymaking. So interestingly, I suppose, geospatial data often adds value to lots of other data. If you're talking about relative investment, relative investment to different geographic areas in the country and you're looking at placing that investment or comparing the different investments across a country, then you can only do that if you have effective geospatial data. So that's one of the things in the UK that we look to talk to decision-makers about to ensure that they're applying a spatial perspective when evidencing policy. So I think you can promote the value of geospatial data from that perspective, to say that it adds value to lots of other data that they're using to evidence policymaking. But I think that context is essential to that.
So Rhian, we heard lots of references to engaging and communicating and so forth. And, you know, as the president of the International Cartographic Association, I'm hoping that in your answer of effective tools for communicating, you mentioned the power of the map. But go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm actually speaking on that a little bit later. People absolutely love maps. And I've just stolen a phrase from Lee. Maps are data as a way to get people interested. But what I was going to add is that I was reading an article yesterday about language and about persuading people to, you know, and how you would get a message across. And the author of the article was saying that imagine is one of the most powerful words in the dictionary. And I was kind of surprised by that. But the message was, sometimes it's very powerful to say to somebody, imagine if we didn't have this data. If we didn't have this data, we couldn't do X, Y, and Z, or this would happen, or you couldn't deliver this particular policy in the same way. So I think it's a question of being quite creative sometimes about how you put your messaging across and to use that example of what would happen if you didn't have it, particularly when you're looking for funding and that sort of thing. And so, yes, I think that's a very powerful way of getting people on board with your vision and getting them to think about your wider data. So that's less about giving data to policymakers and more about encouraging them to invest in your data.
Thanks. And Dr. Tulu, did you have a comment you want to make?
Thank you for the question. I think the important strategy is to communicate the importance and value of the IGIF with decision-makers and policymakers. We have to have a clear communication strategy. I think in the first implementation phase of the IGIF, every country has actually encouraged to also focus on SP9, communication and engagement. And this is very important to promote the importance of the IGIF framework for, across all stakeholders, especially communicating the decision-makers and policymakers is very important. In our experience, we have, during the implementation phase of the IGIF, we have been able to communicate with some line ministries. And they are very much interested and actually they raised very critical questions. They asked us to, if we can able to provide information on the current status of some SDG indicators. For example, the maternity mortality rate, the geographic distribution and extent of with indicator related to health, well-being of citizens. And this information is very critical to, you know, get the detailed information with all location information. So we are just discussing with the plan ministry to enable that we can bring all stakeholders together so that we can compile all previous existing information related to some strategic pathways and indicators and targets that are relevant to national priorities. So we have been communicating the importance of geospatial information, locating the existing SDG targeting indicators and the level of public service. If the public service and agendas are very serious, then I think they would like to use this information to make a decision so that the scarce resources would be allocated to intervene some of the critical challenge the nation has. So communication is very important and I think we have to work on communication engagement seriously.
Thank you. Thanks. Very good. Okay, let's see if we have, okay, so we're over here. Please.
I have one question. That is, a lot of data has been generated in the last few decades. Now, is there any policy framework for spatial data mining so that we can make use of the data in a better way for development? That is question number one. If you permit, I have another question. That is with reference to any policy framework for water security, which is going to be the future problem, probably with a specific focus on urban water security. So is there any such a framework at UN level? So that may be touched upon. And finally, is there any formulation of strategy for theme-specific master plan strategies? If I recall yesterday's Prime Minister Modi's statement about multimodal master planning, so can we think of theme-specific master plans for the developmental activities at urban scale? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So that's one to three questions. So I'm going to try to see if our panel can blend those questions together into maybe single answers. Talia, can I begin with you on this one? Beginning with the data mining question and?
Thanks, yeah, I can take the first question. So the huge amount of data that's generated, an increasing amount, is an opportunity, I think, for us to do things differently, do things better, to deliver better services for citizens as governments and industry as well, deliver applications that are valuable for customers. There are really big challenges also with trying to implement those policies if you're in the public sector, to think about, you know, how you run a business if you're working in the private sector. And those challenges range across considerations such as, do we have the technical capability in the public sector in different countries to host and gain insights from such big data, such vast quantities of data that's coming in all the time? We're thinking about it in the UK a little bit in relation to both mobile data, so data that is captured on people's smartphones that was used to great effect to manage the COVID pandemic had become more relevant. And also, data that's similarly current, earth observation data, so satellite imaging, remote sensing. We think that there's going to be a prevalence in the availability of this kind of data. So a great opportunity in the future, but also great challenges about how you harness the power of using that data. So one of the challenges, as I said, is about capability of the technology. It's also about capability of the people. The people who work in the public sector, who work in different organizations, can they use the data effectively to deliver their services more efficiently? Does this mean a great disruption in their jobs, in their livelihoods? How many people we need to do particular kinds of things? Would that be less people in future? So there's a threat there almost. And then I think one of the other interesting challenges that we've touched upon a little bit is to do with access models, so data access. Whether we are able to provide access to this data for free and whether that's useful or whether if we do that, it means that we can't maintain it over time because it needs investment to be a sustainable and useful asset. So whether then there's common licensing or charging or a commercial approach that we want to back by industry because after all, we are also supporting economic benefits and growth through use of data. So I think there's a lot of things for us to think about because there's so much data around at the moment. And it'll be interesting to see how the components of the IGIF are able to pick up this kind of conversation for different countries who might be at different stages of thinking, stages of development when they're approaching this topic.
Thanks. This is a complicated, a simple question with a very complicated impact and answer. And so I think this is something that we'll be working on for quite a while as we go forward. We've come up against our tea time, or tea break. So at this time, I think I'll draw our session to a close. If you would join with me in thanking our panel, I think this is a great, we have achieved our goal here. Your engagement, your questions, and we hope that the panel answered your questions. We're going to have to stop at this time. Maybe we can pick it up at another time. But thank you to the panel for a great session today. And thank you for being participatory in this session. So you made it a success. So thank you very much.